All right, let's go.
Teams rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, I'm in the hat.
College Media Independent School District 544 to order. We want to establish a form for us, please.
Certainly. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson here. Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes here and Stephen Vigasa.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda passes. Moving on, we have a resolution on acknowledgements.
I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. This is a thank you to Jason Marquette and April Howgie for their donations to the Otter Angel Account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals.
Do we have a second on that resolution?
One second.
Do you have any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving into reports, we have Ryan Johnson here, Assistant IQ Academy Principal. He's here to talk about the ESAA Plan and enrollment updates.
Thanks for having me. Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
Certainly, see you. ESAA team continues to work. High school, middle school teams meet weekly. They're reviewing student data, pulling students that have failed three classes or more. Then teachers kind of divvy up who's going to contact that student that week. Then our ESAA team meets on a monthly basis, just kind of review what's going on. Big question for us, what else can we do? You know, trying to connect with those students that aren't engaged. And we're making phone calls, trying to set up one-on-one meetings. Teachers try for a while, then it gets passed on to me. I'm trying to touch base with those kids too when I am able to, set up a meeting with a student and learning coach, typically their parent. Trying to set some goals just for increasing time in the contents, completing coursework, making sure they're getting to those live class connect sessions as well. So we can set a two-week goal, then I check back with them after that. If it's still not working, then kind of the conversation is, is this best fit? Kind of right before the end of the semester, having a few of those conversations that were not set up for credit recovery at IQ, so is an ALC a better setting? Particularly conversations that we're having there. So teachers continue to work hard, I'm very impressed. When we go through the list, just how it pulls the data, it just has the first four letters of their last name and teachers know who that student is. So I'm very proud of that, that our teachers are intentional about building relationships with the students in the online environment, so that's very cool to see. This year, we started a Find Your Path class. We had 12 high school students in that and 11 middle school students in the middle school Find Your Path. What that was, kind of helped support them, setting goals, designing kind of the coursework to reflect on what they're doing. So sometimes their work might be, you need to make a list of all your missing assignments, kind of prioritize what needs to get done, so the teachers are doing a good job. Help support students in that area so they can be successful, online learners. Second semester, we have 14 in the high school class and 12 in the middle school class. We're just letting them take it for one semester and as another intervention, as well as the team members calling them. Teams talk each week too, are there other students that'd be successful at that? We're kind of targeting those students that are somewhat engaged but have that lower percentage. Students that aren't engaged, we aren't recommending for that class just because we don't want to fill out those spots with students that are choosing not to do the work. See, first semester, the middle school team worked with approximately 85 kids, reaching out to them. Not all at the same time, but just over the course of the semester. Then we tracked students that kind of got out of that three F's or more category. We looked at whether it was withdrawn and going to another district or maybe they got it down to two or passed all their classes. The success rate was kind of in that 30% range with the middle schoolers. It was much higher with the high schoolers. They were in the 75 and then the seniors were at 88%. Like there's a little more motivation for our high school students to earn that credit. So coming into the semester, it's like quite a few grades get to passing, which is always good to see. And I'm thankful that our teachers work with students, allowing them to turn and work up until the end, turn in those credits. Just to give you an idea, kind of enrollment numbers. In ninth grade, to start the year, we're at 58. At the end of first semester, we're at 81 students. Then we also had 20 students withdraw over the course of that time. So we're dealing with 101 kids, just in ninth grade. Kind of similar in the high school as well, in grades 10 through 12. You know, we have our actual enrollment number, but then we had 27 withdrawals in 10th grade, 25 in 11th and 25 seniors that withdrew as well. So quite a bit of turnover. Again, you know, maybe it's not a good fit for them. A lot of them return back to their local district or again going to the ALC where they can recover some credits more quickly. Passing rate for the middle school, first semester was 82%, all the courses taken. High school is 81%. I always like to see that higher, but I'm pleased with where it's at. Again, a lot of time I'm focused on those students that are behind in credits or not doing the work. So it's always pleasant to see that. For in-district students, grades 9 through 12 was a 91% passing rate. Current enrollment, the elementary, IQ sitting at 140 students. Middle school's 202 and high school's 421, so a total of 763. K-12 projections, which have been accurate the last two years I've been with them, have us ending at 898 kids. So that's an increase of another 130 students, so here they come.
Remind us again of what's the final day when someone can enroll?
Yep, we just changed that this fall.
Right.
So the last enrollment day will be the last school day in April.
Okay.
And we'll still have kids starting, you know, a week or two into May, just once they get through that orientation process with us, but we won't have the week of graduation getting seniors. So appreciate your support in that. The next year, K-12's projecting over 1,000 students that we'll end with. Each year, we start a little higher and end higher. And again, let's see, there's three K-12 schools in Minnesota, MNVA, Insight and US. And MNVA and Insight close their enrollment. I believe MNVA's end of February, so very soon here. And Insight's March, so then we get all of those. That's why we'll see a big jump here at the end. Any questions for me?
Remind me what ESSA stands for?
Every Student Succeed Act. It's the federal legislation we're under. So working to improve our graduation rate.
Ryan, do you have any idea, well, what the enrollments are at MNVA and Insight? I mean comparatively?
We're the smallest of the three. I would, I don't have a good guess for ya. They're much larger.
Like 10 times or 5 times?
No, I'd say probably double.
Each of them?
Yep.
That's close enough.
Insight's based out of the cities and then MNVA is Houston. They're kind of one of the first online schools.
Ryan, with the students that transfer out, are they usually like the first year they're trying something and then they transfer out a lot of times? Is that how, or is it, you know, a student's been there for, you know, you're talking your ninth grade year, are they students that have been there in eighth grade and now moved to ninth grade? Or how does that?
You see some of that, you know, kind of building transition times.
Okay.
We'll keep them maybe even through elementary, then they'll maybe go to middle school or vice versa in middle school and transition back to their high school.
Sure.
You know, we have the wide gamut of all that building, so it wasn't a good environment. So now when their student would transition, another one might do that. Yeah, we have the students that are with us for a short time, they try it and find it's not a good fit. Not too often do we have students with us for years and then leave, but I think looking last year kind of middle school, we figured kind of that 35, 40% retention range that we had from year to year at the middle school level.
Other questions for Ryan? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Our next report will be Scott Kolbeck, our Elementary Principal at Adams and McKinley.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as I speak to you right now, our teachers at McKinley and Adams and all across the district are busy at work conferencing with parents. And so we'll have a busy night tonight, going up to about 7:45 PM with conferences and then look to conference all day Thursday and then into the evening, Thursday evening, with our second round of parent-teacher conferences. I always enjoy walking around our buildings, the days leading up to and the day of parent-teacher conferences. The hallways are filled with student work, whether it be some of their writing samples or their artwork. It's just very impressive and I appreciate the good work that our students do and then our teachers making sure that it's up and there for parents and students to be proud of and look at in the coming conference with their child's teacher. I wanted to mention, and maybe I did mention this to you, the last time I was here in March at Adams School, we are taking on a school-wide activity called One School, One Book. And we're also including the two secondary classes at Cleveland, the two first grade classes at McKinley. But our PTO purchased a trade book for every student and the title of the book is Bigfoot, Littlefoot. And how this is going to work over the course of the month of March is the students will bring the book home every night, have a parent read one chapter to them per night, and then they'll bring the book back to school the next day and the teacher will read the exact same chapter that the parent read to them the night before. So it'll be one chapter at a time, but they'll hear it two times. And our big kickoff is going to be Monday, March 2nd. And rumor has it, rumor has it that we've maybe located or identified a real Sasquatch who might make an appearance throughout the course of the month at these schools. So add a little excitement to the book Bigfoot, Littlefoot. It's written from the perspective of a Sasquatch who is actually raised to never go out into public or you might be seen by a human. And the end of the story, a little human becomes really good friends with the Sasquatch. And it's just a really, really cute story. There's nothing scary about it. And if the Sasquatch does show up to the schools, is a friendly-looking, friendly-looking creature.
Does he look like Zero the Hero?
Not at all.
But Zero the Hero will be there in case he gets out of line.
Mr. Kolbeck might be there holding the hand of, to make sure everybody sees that this is friendly. And the creature must be 5'10" or smaller. Okay. Wanted to just mention that on Wednesday of this week, it is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So we hope that we can make our bus drivers around here, of which there are many, and they have a very large, important responsibility, so we're going to be hoping to make them feel appreciated, extra, extra special on Wednesday. Kindergarten registration, I did mention to you, I believe that is on March 23rd. We were working on updating all of our mailing information, which is going to start going out in the mail next week. Included in that is we include some information about RightStart. We're tweaking our RightStart dates this summer. Generally, we do them on Tuesday and Wednesday, the first week of summer break, so to speak. But instead of Tuesday, Wednesday, we're just going to do it on a Wednesday, Thursday. We're building in, you know, we have that snow day, taking that into account. And then what if we have a second one? If we don't have a second one, it'll give our RightStart teachers just a one-day break from their last day of work until the students come back. RightStart, as you may know, is, we bring our incoming group of kindergartners into the building for two consecutive days for an hour and a half. We have three sessions that the families can choose from. Also recently, on February 13th, we celebrated the 100th Day of School. We held an assembly in the McKinley Gymnasium and a superpower was handed out that day of Never Giving Up. And Zero the Hero did make an appearance and did five ball juggling with Mrs. Lil, the gym teacher. And wouldn't you know it, from time to time, Mrs. Lil would drop one of those five tennis balls and Zero the Hero had to tell her, "It's okay, just never give up, Mrs. Lil." And sometimes what I noticed is if Zero the Hero ever dropped a tennis ball, he somehow put it on Mrs. Lil. Yeah, so I don't know how that worked, but she was a really good sport. So that was the 10th and final superpower that our kindergartners were handed out. This year, McKinley School's superpower, Never Giving Up. Something we're excited about this spring and something that our kids in Fergus Public Schools haven't done for many, many years, our generous PTO is funding, fully funding a trip, admission and transportation to the Waukatoons Zoo for our first graders on Wednesday, May 13th. And for all of our second graders on Wednesday, May 20th. Moving forward, going forward into future years, their hope is to fully fund that trip on an annual basis for our first graders. So we're very much looking forward to that. In conversation with the Waukatoons Zoo, they suggest Wednesdays as a day that's maybe less, less travel, less visited on that day. So we're hoping for nice weather and maybe a day that there's not so many schools. They do tell me that they don't limit the number of schools and the number of places that come to their zoo on any given day, but they did suggest maybe a Wednesday. So that's how we selected those days. And we wanted to select them a little bit earlier in the month, 13th and the 20th. In case of, maybe it's just raining horribly and we decide not to go on that particular day of school. Our kids can still eat their sandwiches that they drink from home on that day or that they order from the school. And then we can see if we can find another day to get there yet in the spring. Speaking of our PTO, they recently fully funded a field trip downtown to the Center for the Arts and we were treated to fantastic, very skilled actors and actresses. The play was Magic School Bus. And these five performers could really keep the attention. I mean, if you can keep the attention of five and six-year-olds and six and seven-year-olds for a full 55 minutes, you know it's really, really well done. And so thank you to, you know, Michael Bergraff and the Center for the Arts and our PTO for bringing this great experience to town for our students. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention the month of February. As you know, it's I Love to Read Month. And it's fun to see various community members, who are often referred to as mystery readers, it could include parents, that are being invited into the classrooms to read to our students in the class. I've had the good fortune of being able to go into three classrooms, two kindergarten classrooms and a first grade classroom, and be a mystery reader. It's always kind of fun when you show up, the kids will get excited about who the reader is going to be for that day. So thank you to any of our parents or our community members. I think Superintendent Drake has been in a classroom or two reading this month and perhaps some of you as school board members have been over there as well and I just haven't seen you come and you're gone. So a lot of, a lot of good things going on in our schools and just wanted to update you on a few of them here this evening. So with that, I can entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Our next report will be from Dean Monkey, our Secondary School Principal.
Hey, good evening, everybody. As Scott mentioned, we have parent-teacher conferences going on tonight, all day Thursday and Thursday night. And a special thank you goes out to Catherine Anderson, who right behind us here in the main foyer has invited some of our work-based internship partners to come in here this evening and just set up some booths and some information. And many of these businesses here in town are also always looking for workers, whether that be high school or a little bit beyond. And so they were more than willing to come in and kind of set up some information tables here to welcome parents or students as they come for conferences. And it just so happens that we have a high school choir concert this evening, starting at 7 o'clock. So we would invite anybody out there in the public to show up early for conferences, stay for the choir concert afterwards. And tonight, our choir concert, it's their annual food shelf night. So basically, the only charge for admission is the asking of a donation of a couple food shelf items or something like that. And they usually do a pretty good collection with all the choir members as well that come in with food items. So just a real nice night here and we started at 4 o'clock. We'll go to 7:45 with conferences at our 5 through 12 level here. And concert a little bit earlier than that, starting at 7. Some other upcoming events, we have a 7th and 8th grade choir concert coming up on Monday, March 2nd, also at 7 o'clock. We have a middle school orchestra concert coming up on Tuesday, March 10th at 7. And then we have our all-school band concert in the Gold Gymnasium on Monday, March 16th, also starting at 7. So we kind of get our run-through here in early March. Just kind of running through on a few concert dates there. And then finally, our high school students have an opportunity to go on the music trip this year, headed to Memphis and New Orleans. And I got a chance to go on that trip the last time they had in that direction and it was an absolute blast. And really some nice sights along the way there for them to see. And that'll be happening on March 25th. They'll be heading out and so on that week, they'll have an opportunity. They'll only miss two days of school in order to pull this off. And because on that Friday, we don't have school and they'll be back by the following Monday. So a lot of students, we usually end up with maybe about 200-plus going on that music trip. So great opportunity for some of these kids that haven't had a chance to get too far out of the state as of yet to be able to go on a trip like that. Special congratulations to Dustin Peralas, who qualified for the state wrestling tournament this last week. And we just learned today that he was seeded second, which is quite the accomplishment. He did place fourth last year, so I think that had a little bit to do with a returning podium winner there from last year. But he'll be going on Friday morning, I believe, well, Thursday, I believe, Thursday morning, with a chance to wrestle through Saturday if possible. And then Tucker Hykes was also from our Nordic skiing team, had an opportunity to go to state here a couple weeks ago. And that was a fantastic accomplishment for our Nordic ski team, which has been a school program now only for a couple of years. But an opportunity for him to kind of represent the Otters at the state ski meet this last year. A couple other things quickly here. We're almost to the completion of our high school registration schedule for next year. We've got a few catch-ups on a few students that we may have missed along the way. Anywhere from maybe 15 to 20 per class that we're kind of tracking down now to get those last few registrations in and we'll be able to make some good decisions with that data in relationship to what kind of schedule we'll have to put together in a number of sections coming up here for next year. And then also, we have an ACT test for our juniors coming up before the end of next month here on March 24th. And that day there, we give our seniors the day off there. And we encourage them strongly from the counseling office to take that opportunity to maybe take a college visit or find something else there that they could do in relationship to career planning for the following year. But it really helps us out a lot to have one less grade level in the building here when we use the whole 2,800 hallway here as a testing location for those juniors. And I think I've mentioned in the past too, this is really an optional program. It is not required across the state anymore, but we have chosen to continue it with the board's blessing in relationship to offering this opportunity for our juniors. And it's fantastic because it is a great money saver for the families to be able at least get one of those tests in and also make sure that we've got a score almost across the grade level for our juniors. And the research has shown that most students do a little bit better than they even anticipate. And sometimes that's a motivating force for them to move on and find some type of secondary higher-end to go for them just because of the score that they may be pulled out here in relationship to their ACT. And finally, I shared this with our admin team, just trying to catch up on those last few teacher observations that I need to get in here. I think I'm down to a remaining dozen for the year, which was pretty good when we started out at over 40. But absolutely fantastic to get into those classrooms. You know, if a teacher has taught less than three years, we need to get out there three different times over the course of those three years each year. And you can just see the growth even with some of these teachers that we've hired over the course of the last three years. And the amount of technology which they, which they can pull off in the classroom is amazing. And just the different instructional methods with which they use are just fantastic these days. So it's really fun to get out there and we've got some fantastic new teachers. The only thing I have to make sure that I do is that I need to complete my homework and do the write-ups for all those observations in a timely fashion to get that information back to those teachers. But a real fun part of the job to get out and take a look at those, those folks in the classroom. Questions for me?
Questions from the board? Thank you, Dean. Our last, last report is from Superintendent Drake.
Well, good evening. You'll have to forgive my voice, it's carryover from my annual dance with the flu over the weekend. I also want to acknowledge Minnesota's Fourth Annual School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, which will be this Wednesday, in recognition of all they do on a daily basis to transport our children safely to and from school. And I thought this would also be a good opportunity to talk about the school closing process and what that looks like. I had written a column earlier in the fall about it, but that's been quite some time ago. And then, of course, we had a school closure not that long ago and I think it's important for the board and the community to know what goes into those decisions. So the night prior, some districts were already making a decision to close school for the following day. And I guess it would be my protocol, if we knew for certain that the weather was not going to change and that we were going to be in an event significant enough where it wouldn't be safe to transport, we would go ahead and make that call early as well out of respecting courtesy to the families so that they can make plans. If that's not the case, if there's still some variability out there, the most accurate decision can be made the longer you can postpone it because then you've got the latest weather information and radar coming out. So that's, that's what we did. Mike Clark and I talk when we know there's a weather situation coming at 5:30 in the morning. By that time, I would have already looked at the weather forecast from the television networks, the National Weather Service out of Grand Forks, and then confer with Mike in terms of what his drivers or his experience is out on the roads. When we spoke that morning, he said, you know, there's, there's some significant challenges kind of out towards Foxhole as you start heading west out on 210. And we talked about would we, should we delay two hours and then check it at that point? Becomes somewhat challenging when you're still under a blizzard warning because in the open country, it does not take a lot of, a lot of snow and with gusting potentially at 40 miles an hour plus, you can go from beautiful driving, which frankly, we ended up having for the most part, to something that you wouldn't want your children and the drivers and staff out in in a fairly, fairly quick amount of time. So ultimately, the decision was made to just make a call at 5:30. So ultimately, the decision was made to just make a dis- call at five-thirty that we were going to cancel. Hopefully, the community is understanding that in erring on the side of student safety, we may have some false positives from time, time on occasion. But that's kind of, I would rather err that way than the alternative. And so that's kind of, in a nutshell, what goes into it and how that decision came about. Also want to really thank the community and the committee members for the Five Forty-Four Foundation and the Dollars for Scholars. Both are really doing well financially. There's a great deal of personal investment from the people that are working on those committees. And it's just a testament to the level of support that the community gives towards its students here. So again, with great appreciation for all they do. We had an admin meeting today, and the main purpose of that was really to get updates on where each of the communities were at with the strategic planning process. And we heard from each of the groups, all reported that there's really some great discussion taking place. The breadth of the groups and the topics that they, that they're talking about is quite wide, and then you can dig as deep as you want to go to. So there's a lot of conversations to be had. They're still working through things and kind of sorting their way through priorities. But again, everything that was reported today is that people are actively engaged in the work, the conversations are engaging, thought-provoking, interesting, and should lead to some really good recommendations for the district heading forward. Tomorrow, I will be participating in a meeting with city officials. It's gonna be held at Lakes Country Service Co-op. But it's about a proposed project that would involve solar panels or a solar project at the Prairie Woodlands Learning Center. So that's about all that I know about it at the moment, but we'll be happy to share more once I, once I attend that meeting tomorrow. And then just want to congratulate the girls' basketball team and Coach Strand on a wonderful regular season. And certainly invite the public to attend our home playoff game this Thursday at seven P.M. We'll be taking on Ladina Deer Creek, and encourage everyone to come out and support the team. And with that, I can answer any questions from the board.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to with our agenda, we have the consent items, free consideration for approval, the events for the February tenth, regular school board meeting, personnel.
Okay. Yeah, we have a few changes, excuse my voice. Support staff hires Jessica O'Nuliffe. Okay, thank you, everyone. Reassignment to Bay's server food production, it's a seven hours a day, a grade-two position, and that's effective today. Taylor Thompson, part-time special education professional at Heritage, and that's on March fifth, that she'll begin this part-time position, it's three and a half days a week there. Support staff resignation, Toni Cantrell, Toni's been in our, and a bus supervisor here at Kennedy Secondary School. And then a signature designation, Christina, or better known as Trina Weisel, elementary teacher at Adams, and that's effective at the end of the school year. And then the last thing is a notice of desire to negotiate from the Minnesota School Employees Association, otherwise known as MSEA, custodial secretary personnel. So I offer, I recommend those all for approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Do we have a second? A second, Steve? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the general consent items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? General consent items pass. There is no old business. For new business, we have the Fergus Falls Public Schools Twenty-Twenty Pay Equity Report that was sent to us. Lane, do you want to comment at all with that?
Um, I did have a little sheet, unfortunately, I didn't bring it. But basically, it's just making, ensuring that it's a gender equality, that both males and females are paid accordingly. So that's kind of the basis of the entire report. Everyone got a little bit longer length or lengthier explanation in the board report.
So do we have a motion to approve the Fergus Falls Public Schools Twenty-Twenty Pay Equity Do we have a second?
No, second.
Any discussion?
This is on like every three years, I think that's what you said.
That is correct, every three years. We're in a little different cycle. I do it also for nine-thirty-five, and theirs was last year. So I have one year off, actually.
All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report passes, thank you. That concludes our regular school board meetings for tonight. We will follow with a work session to talk about MDE survey, one-to-one initiative, negotiation process, and staff survey. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, March ninth, at five fifteen P.M. right here at the Otter Community Room at Kennedy Secondary School. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I say, do we have a second? No, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.